I have the time of 6:30. I'd like to call the February 8th regular meeting of our, the Brandon School District Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Dr. Melissa Clark here. Rebecca Haynes.
Here.
Diane Salter.
Here.
Kimberly Smith Colaga.
Here.
Hillary Stokowski.
Here.
Jeff Zolki.
Here.
Jan Meek.
Here.
Carly Stone.
Here.
Diane Zedan. Dr. Carl Heidrich.
Here.
Lisa Cabaluno.
Here. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Maria, do we have any public comments at this time or questions?
We'll look and see if we have any raised hands.
Thank you.
I do not see any raised hands.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the Brandon High School Student Council Report. And tonight, I believe we have Alamanino with us.
Yep, and then Emma Loce just joined. She's our secretary.
Hi, Emma.
I'm going to share our presentation real quick. Here we are. This is my first time ever screen sharing, so.
It's going well.
Okay. Okay, so like I said, um, we have me, Alamanino, and Emma Loce here to tell you a bit about what's going on at the high school, so.
So this week is our Valentine's Day Spirit Week, and we're calling it Sweet Week. And we're having a daily raffle for people who participate in the spirit days. And then at lunches each day, we draw a name and we give them a gift card. Then we also made a matchmaker where they fill out the sheet and then based off of their answers, we give them a match to make a new friend. And we decorated the hallways and then we're selling flowers at lunches. And then the next thing on our agenda is since a lot of seniors have been missing out on stuff, COVID, we're trying to come up with ways to make this year special for the senior class.
So the, these are the days for Sweet Week. So today was Cupid Day, where we had people wear red, white, and pink. Um, tomorrow is our BFF Day, where people twin and they dress the same as their friend. Wednesday is Wednesday of Love, where we're asking people to dress up like they're from the 60s, and that's the day that we'll be selling flowers at lunch. Um, and then Thursday is our Secret Admirer Day, where you're supposed to dress as someone who inspires you. And Friday is our Show Your Love for BHS Day, Brandon Blue Day, and we're going to be passing out suckers.
And then now winter sports are now allowed with full contact and games are allowed to be played. And then we just started our second semester report cards came out today. And then there's now a homework club for after school. And for juniors, Mr. Moore and his daughter Mallory Moore are running Future Fridays, where juniors can go and start looking at colleges and kind of planning out where they might want to go.
And that's all we have for us, for you guys. Do you have any questions about anything?
How's it going for your discussions on Ella, with you being a senior and all? Um, identifying those special things for, to celebrate our seniors. I know parents have been reaching out, the entire community is behind you guys. You know, is, if there's anything we can do to assist, you want to run something by us, you, you need something, don't hesitate to reach out to me. And then of course I communicate with everyone, but just keep us in mind.
Thank you so much.
We're thinking of you.
Thank you. We've had a lot of support from parents and members of the community in trying to plan things. I know just today, um, there were like suckers passed out to all of the seniors as like a gift from the senior parents. So that was really nice. And then, um, with student council, we've been talking to Mr. Stevens about possibly planning like an outdoor prom or something. So things are going well, I'd say.
Well, good job. I know the, the student council works hard for sure and, and everyone appreciates the efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next in our agenda is item six for anybody following along, and it's the Superintendent's Report.
Yes, good evening and thank you. We have Mr. Dynas here for Athletic Director for the All-State Athletic Recognition. And I believe we have Coach Lovelace and Coach Zubey on, on the virtual link to talk about these great student athletes.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Heidrich. I'm not going to talk too much here other than just to say that we had an outstanding fall season. And like I shared in December, we had some athletes that had exemplary seasons. Um, and tonight we have two of our finest coaches with us. Um, and I'm going to let them brag about their athletes and their accomplishments. So I'm going to turn it over to Coach Lovelace first. Um, just a little bit about Coach Lovelace, for those of you that don't know him, he's been a Brandon varsity soccer coach for the last nine years, has a couple Flint Metro League Championships under his belt, um, has an 53, 17, and four Flint Metro League record and his overall record and coach, I hope, 84, 56, and 11. Uh, so he has got quite the, uh, the track record of success. And, uh, it's no doubt that that is displayed through, through our athletes. Um, and we had two All-State soccer players this year and an honorable mention. So without further ado, Coach Lovelace, take it away.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for the invite. Appreciate the chance to, um, recognize some of our players tonight. Um, we had another fine season this season. We, uh, lost in the district final in a shootout to Orchard Lake St. Mary's. A very successful season. We went 13 and four. Um, I'd like to start with our honorable mention, and that's Aiden Reynolds. Um, he played in the central midfielder for us. He's a three-year varsity player. And he had 14 goals and 15 assists, which put him up in the top five of, uh, scorers in, in the league. The good thing about Aiden is, uh, he's only a junior, so we get him for one more year. So congratulations to you, Aiden. Well done. Um, next we have Ian Burke, who made the third team All-State. He's a senior captain. He played striker for us up top and, uh, he's also a four-year varsity player. He played since he was a freshman. He had 19 goals and seven assists, and I believe he was only beat out by one player on a Goodrich squad, um, as far as goals went. Um, he wore a lot of hats, kicker for the football team. He does a lot of other things, great kid, hard worker, and he'll be attending the Michigan State Engineering School. Congratulations, Ian. Last but not least, Ben Gritza, he made the second team, which is phenomenal. You know, top 28 players in, uh, over 2000. And actually, he's a top four because they only take two keepers, uh, from, for the first team and for the second team, so. He's a senior captain also, played keeper for four years for us in varsity, um, which is unusual for a freshman to take over that role. He has over 60 wins in his career and, uh, he, he came up with an amazing 32 shutouts in his career, which will put him in the MHSAA record book. And, um, by my figures, he should be tied for 15th place all time, all divisions. That includes Division One schools, so phenomenal achievement and like to congratulate Ben. Uh, thanks again for the time and congratulations to you, young men. Well deserved.
Absolutely. Congratulations to those athletes as well as you, Coach Lovelace. You're doing an outstanding job with our, our boys program. Our next coach is, is also no stranger to success, Coach Brad Zubey. Um, been in the district now five years, um, also has a couple Flint Metro League Championships under his belt, um, one overall championship and then most recently the Stars Division Championship. Coach Zubey, I think I got your overall record right here, but 27 and six in the Flint Metro League over the last five years and 38 and 10 overall, um, in the last five years with five playoff appearances as well. We, we made it to the playoffs every year under, under Coach Zubey. So, um, Coach also has a couple All-State athletes that I'll turn it over to, to him and let him talk about.
All right. Hi, everybody. Appreciate you giving us some time tonight to talk about our boys. Uh, want to thank, um, Mr. Dynas and the whole administration team just helping us have a season this year. What a great year it was too, for a season that almost didn't happen, so a lot to be thankful for. Boys did win their division this year, went undefeated in league play, um, seven and two overall, and made it to our third trip to the district finals in four years. Um, so a lot to be proud of. Um, 18 of our, 18 of our players were, um, all metro, or I'm sorry, all, all Flint Metro League, um, selections, either first team, second team, or I would mention, and got a lot of those guys coming back, looking forward to next season. Um, did want to recognize quickly, we had three young men who were, um, All-State academic through our Coaches Association, Colton Leslie, Ian Burke, and Bryson Gunn, who, um, kill it on the field and the classroom, so very proud of those three guys. Uh, we had two young men who were, um, noticed as honorable mention, All-State players this year in Division Four. Our place kicker, Ian Burke, who, uh, is graduating with 153 career points. I know he's, also has some MHSAA, um, kicking records we've got to get on record with the state, but, uh, an awesome career for Ian as a three-year starter for us. Uh, another honorable mention, All-State selection, uh, was Jawan Slater. Jawan had over, um, 1,000 all-purpose yards rushing and receiving from scrimmage this year, scoring 18 touchdowns, uh, in just nine games. So, uh, he averaged 14 yards every time he touched the football for us this year, so outstanding season, uh, for, for Jawan as an honorable mention, All-State player. We had two, uh, first-team All-State selections. This first one was from the, uh, Michigan High School Football Coaches Association, uh, which is pretty exciting. That's a panel of coaches that, uh, we vote as a, as a playoff district and then it moves to a regional level and then to a state level and they have to make each selection. So, um, our starting offensive tackle, Gino Trabuzio, was named a, uh, first-team All-Regional, um, selection and then got pushed through to the state selections and was, um, named a first-team All-State selection for the Coaches Association. He was also a first-team All-Leaguer. Um, Gino is just a junior, so he's coming back. Um, Gino is what we refer to in the football world as a mauler. Um, he will knock you down and run right over you and he's a gentleman though, he'll pull you back up and knock you down again the next play though, but, uh, we, we're very proud of Gino. He's an outstanding young man. He's an honor roll student here at Brandon. Um, excited to have him back to try to be a repeat All-State player next year and keep pushing our program forward. So we're very proud of everything that Gino Trabuzio has done. He's been a starter for us since his freshman year, so he'll go into next season as a, as a four-year starter for us. So, um, a great job by Gino this year. Uh, the next young man I want to recognize is our, um, All-State linebacker Peyton Gullidge. Peyton was named, uh, first-team All-State in Division Four in the Detroit Free Press. Uh, the Detroit Free Press, uh, has a big selection process as well, where they collect nominees and votes from, um, across the state of Michigan. And the more times you pop up on the ballot, the better chance you have. So Peyton, again, is very well recognized across the state. Also as a All-Stater, Peyton was also a first-team All-League. Peyton's been a, um, All-League player three years in a row, back-to-back first-team All-Flinch Metro player. Peyton was also a first-team All-Metro North selection in the Free Press. I, that's, that's the best of the best across all divisions in Oakland County, and that's almost a tougher team to make than the All-State team is sometimes with all of the big schools that are in, uh, in Oakland County. So we're very proud of Peyton and his career here. Uh, Peyton is graduating with 229 career tackles and 15 career quarterback sacks and, uh, a lot of other action in opposing backfields. Peyton's graduating, um, with teams that had a, uh, record of 23 and seven while he was here, uh, starting on this defense. Two league titles, as Mr. Dynas mentioned, and, uh, three playoff wins. So a lot to be proud of for Peyton Gullidge as well. He will definitely be missed by, um, everyone except opposing quarterbacks in the Flint Metro. So, uh, very proud of all of our young men on this team and, uh, looking forward to another great season in, uh, 2021. And, uh, thanks again to, uh, everybody that supports Brandon football. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Coach Zubey, and congratulations to the football players for all their accomplishments. Uh, just a little side note on Ian Burke. If and when he finishes his spring, uh, athletic career, he is on pace right now to graduate with 14 varsity letters, um, in his career. So, um, congratulations to all our athletes, uh, phenomenal fall season. So, um, Dr. Heidrich, do you want me to do a quick, uh, update on winter sports while I got the floor?
Sure. Yes. You got some updated information?
Yeah, yeah, literally hot off the press. It was in my email just an hour ago. I got it at about 5:30 this afternoon. So as you heard from our high school students, winter sports, contact sports are back in action. They started practice today with games beginning, uh, this week. So our basketball teams will, will hit the floor on Thursday and Friday for games. Competitive cheer and wrestling can start their, their practices, uh, but their contests cannot start till this weekend after the 12th. So quick little update there. I'm sure you've heard through the media, um, some sports being able to wear masks, not wear masks. Uh, everybody is required to practice and compete in a mask in all the sports with the exception of wrestling. Wrestling now is the only one, um, that will get their rapid tests on the day of a meet. Um, those tests will be provided free to the district. We have to order them through the MDHHS, um, and I'll get a link tomorrow where I'll take care of all that. Our coaches, myself, our athletic trainer will all be trained on administering those tests. It's a pretty simple process. But wrestling right now is the only one that would be able to compete maskless, um, while on the mat, but they do have to practice with a mask on and then wear it at all other times. All the other sports, coaches, athletes, et cetera, um, will be competing and practicing in masks, um, as of right now. The big question that I've gotten over the last 48 hours or so is spectators. Um, right now, uh, as was discussed last week by the governor, the recommendation is two per athlete. There is some, some language in there that we could have upwards to 250 people. As a league, we have decided that we're going to ease into it. Um, so just, I know this is a public meeting, but want to be transparent that for the first couple contests that we host or travel to, uh, with the Flint Metro League, it will be two guests per participant. Um, and that includes our Palms teams when they perform at, at basketball games. Um, and then when we travel to away events, each coach and athlete will get two guests and we'll have a guest list pass like we did in the fall, um, to, to get our guests in. As we move forward throughout the season, hopefully we'll be able to increase that number. Um, but that's where we stand as of right now. So, um, that was the Cliff Notes version of the long email I got. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Chris, I just wanted to say, I don't really have a, a question at this point as much as I, I just wanted to thank you and, and your team. You, the athletic group has been back and forth again. Um, I know with scheduling and, no, not that schedule, now we're onto this schedule. Wait, no. And so I can only ma, uh, imagine the spreadsheets that have, have gone on and, uh, and the, the telephone calls, et cetera, and trying to get this all worked out each and every time it's changed. So you always handle it with grace, you handle it with a positive attitude, you're a leader for the students in that way, who I know are, are feeling the stress of not knowing what's going on one minute or another. And, um, thank you for, for you and, and your team, leading them through this and helping us all navigate to, to moving to a bit of normal at least. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa, and, and thank you to all of you for the support. It's been, it's been trying, but like, like she said, we make the best of it and we, we move forward, so thank you.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, coaches, and congratulations to all the athletes. Appreciate it. So the other, uh, part of the report is just a few updates on COVID. Uh, we have some really good news. Our COVID numbers are at their lowest point since, uh, early October. So I know it fluctuates and it can change frequently, but last week and a half, uh, we are, we are nearing zero cases right now, staff and students for positive cases. And our quarantine numbers are down substantially, so there's a decrease and our quarantine numbers stand at three. So this is, this is the lowest point we've seen in quite a while. We, we hope that these trends continue, uh, moving forward. Also, I wanted to report, uh, from the Oakland County Health Department that they are prioritizing educators, uh, for the vaccination in the 1B category. And, uh, we have seen, uh, some appointments being scheduled, our first and second dose vaccinations administered for our staff through the Oakland County Health Department. That is really good news. We plan to try to track that, uh, with a survey coming out this week to get a better indication of the percentages, uh, of our staff as far as the number of them vaccinated for our entire staff here at Brandon. And then finally, uh, I'd like to report that we are starting to have initial planning and discussion for what does next year look like for Brandon schools? And so by mid to late February, our administrative team will be working through, um, some different scenarios and brainstorming and to come up with a initial report for the Board of Education on March 15th. And of course there'll be some communications with families as well. And those are my three updates for the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Heidrich. Now we're moving on to, uh, item seven on our agenda, which is the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Port. Thank you. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes.
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga.
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski.
Yes.
Jeff Zolki.
Yes.
Lisa Cabaluno.
Yes. The motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Uh, moving on to information and discussion items. For our, our Board of Education report, um, if anybody has any items they'd like to present at this time, um, there are a number of items within our, our action items that I'll be addressing specifically at that time. But does any, do any of our members have anything you would like to report?
No, the only thing I would like to report is I did attend the Plant Moran, Clark Kill seminar that they had over, I think it was two weeks ago and then just last Saturday. Especially the one-hour session, I do have the PowerPoints I'll send out and we'll post for the board members to have access to, but it was very good. Again, some of it was a little dry during the four, three hours, but elsewise, some really good topics they covered, especially now. But that's well worth training to go to when it comes around next year.
Thank you, Diane. I know that, um, you've, you've raised some really good points and discussion. I know, um, back in the day, uh, when I attended those, uh, training sessions, they're so valuable. Um, I, I want to repeat some of them as well, and I, I do encourage each of our members, when you have the opportunity, I know we're all busy, but when you do have the opportunity, by all means, um, they're, they are worth it, albeit a little dry in parts. So, uh, moving on, now we have our finance report by Jan.
Yeah, good evening. I'm going to be sharing a screen in a minute. Just wanted to preface, um, before I shared the screen, that this is budget season and we are, Dr. Heidrich and myself are looking and trying to come up with, um, the best assumptions going into next year. We're, as Dr. Heidrich mentioned, looking at the model, Carly and him and Diane and I for next year. So these assumptions are, um, based on our best information right now. And of course, um, feedback from the board will be looking at these and going back and forth perhaps for the next, uh, several weeks until June, until the initial budget, um, is presented to the board. So I'm going to share my screen and, um, let's see here. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. So the first thing every year when we're looking at the budget, um, starting to work, build the budget for next year, is we look at our, um, our year-over-year. And unfortunately here at Brandon, we have always, um, we're looking at an enrollment decline. It's getting better every year, but nonetheless, next year we're expecting, um, we're, we're budgeting for a 60-student loss. We're hopeful that that will be better, but right now, that's the number that we're using in this document. And then also here in the right-hand corner, the flat PPE is a flat per pupil. The governor and her initial, uh, revenue, um, estimating conference implied that perhaps we would see a flat, um, per pupil. So that's what we're going with for now. And again, this will change as, um, as we get better or updated information. But I think, um, the board that was here last year knows that we did have some reductions in the summer. We brought back, um, instructional, um, our teachers and some other instructional staff, uh, because of the model we used. We're planning next year to, um, kind of right-size the district based on more students being in person. So this first line is, uh, adjustments to, um, to what model we'll be using next year. So, and then on the right would be the savings. Typically I just use $70,000 per reduction. Uh, that can be a little higher, can be a little lower, but that's the number, um, all-in. That would include the health benefits and the FICA and the MIFRS. Retirement, we're looking at right now four retirements. Again, that number could be a little higher. The savings on the retirements, um, because those, um, teachers are at the top of the scale, the savings is more. So we got it $400,000 in there, again, all-in. The next one is, um, it's on the list, but certainly this one, uh, we may discuss more. This year, due to the pandemic, we, uh, brought in five additional custodians. So we're looking at, they're considered temporary hires for the 2021 school year. So we're, they're on the list to perhaps be, um, that we would not have those additional custodians next year. And the contract amount was 169,400. Our buses that we bought in 13, 14 are paid off, so next year we will not have a bus payment. Um, so that's a $203,000 savings. Um, we're hoping to go a couple of years without a, without that bus payment. On the PPE, again, we used a lot of federal money to buy hospital-grade air purifiers, speech classroom, Plexiglas, electrostatic sprayers, all kind of, um, equipment to make our classrooms safe. Those purchases will not have to be made again next year. So that's about 300,000 savings there. Our Summit Virtual, this year we're budgeted about 360,000. We're looking for opportunities to, um, we're definitely going to have a Summit Virtual, but ways to reduce the cost. So we've got $100,000 savings there. And that's just that right now, that's a rough, rough estimate. We have two literacy coaches, um, where this one, we're looking into it more. The funding, as you'll see in a minute, of $100,000 in funding is going away. So there's an opportunity perhaps, and, and one of the coaches happens to be retiring, so there's an opportunity perhaps to restructure what that program looks like. If that, um, if that happens, there's a savings there of 130. The next one is the transfer to the energy bond. I'm, we have this year's and next year's payments we can cover through our, um, our debt, the money that we've transferred into the debt the last couple, three years. So if we don't use general fund money- couple, three years. So if we don't use general fund money next year for those payments, I left this blank because this one's a big if, but right now, I don't have a savings in there because we haven't, you know, decided for sure what we're doing there. But it's up for, it's an option. Support staff reduction, again, we're looking at perhaps one, nine and 10 should be combined. I changed this around. Perhaps a support staff reduction. Again, looking at the numbers and the configuration and seeing if there's an opportunity there to perhaps go down one FTE. The other side of the equation here, so total reduction's possibly about $1,008,000. The other side of the equation, on the investments, we call them investments every year, our medical hard cap increase, we really, we don't have much to say with that. That's May sum, usually about $40,000. We've been, every year, we like to put in a number for bargaining, we call it, and we have $400,000 as a number that we've used the last few years. So we've got that as an investment. Textbooks curriculum, $50,000. Our transportation contract, we are expecting an increase of, it could be $30,000. We haven't even seen it yet. They're working on getting that to us. So we plugged in a number of $30,000. E-rate, we've got about $15,000 additional over this year. So we're looking at a net savings then of $1,002,000, if we take our reductions and then we add back our investments. And then these numbers down here, because we intend or we're projecting a 60-student pupil loss, that would net about, or reduce our state revenue about $486,000. If the state reverts back, I'll explain the next one. We put this in here because, again, we don't know, there's uncertainty. Our blended count was always or has been typically the last few years, 90% of our fall enrollment plus 10% of the prior February enrollment. This year, the state changed it for the first time, and we're getting paid 75% from last February, 25% for fall. That helped us tremendously. If the state goes back to the way it always was, that would cost us about $454,000. So we have that number in there. We always like to budget conservatively. If they keep, if they keep the blended count the way it is this year, then that's, that's great. That's extra funds to us. The net federal loss, about $400,000. Again, that number could change. There's all kind of things going on in the United States and in the Congress. And the state could get more money, which means we may get more money. But this is the best information we have right now. And as I said a couple of minutes ago, we're losing $100,000 from Oakland Schools in a grant that they, it's a literacy grant this year, and that it was a one-year thing. It's not being renewed. So if we look at all of those assumptions, investments, expenditure reductions, what the state's going to do, we're looking at potentially a fund balance impact of running an operating deficit of about $162,000. And again, these these assumptions can go up and down either way. But this is our starting point and nothing, you know, we wanted to let the board know where we're at and what we're thinking and and trying to make sure that we have a balanced budget to present in June.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What was our student loss assumption for this year that we did last year?
We did 80 for this year, and we beat that. We ended up with 64.
And what is the, because I can't see on the chart, what's the assumption for next year? Is it 60?
60.
60.
60, yes. If we do the year-over-year, it's a little better than 60. This is really, this one is tough because so much has changed with learn-from-home and virtual school. And we could, it could work out better for us, but parents are really looking into all sorts of options now.
Okay, because I'm a little nervous. I thought 60 may be a little low to assume, but.
Yeah. And that's why we're talking, Diane. Certainly, you know, we've done this before where the board has said, eh, maybe we'd like to go a little more conservative on student loss. And, you know, I can throw different numbers into this model.
So for our newer board members, as Jan was saying, she helps us each year begin this budget process early on. And she provides this, this information that we're seeing tonight as is kind of a framework, a baseline to trigger conversations and get literally line items on our radar, so that when we're having further discussions, we all are are literally looking at the the same page and are on the same page. And as, you know, Diane's question just illustrated, Jan really is looking for input. She's looking for questions to be asked. She's always been so welcoming of of even those who, you know, may not be a spreadsheet numbers kind of person, very welcoming of questions and to gain understanding or to think of new ideas. So I just explain all of that for our newer board members to, and anybody listening, to understand where we're starting, that this this is a, this is the base point. And then from here, the conversations occur and Jan takes in all the information she can in trying to inform the line items you see here. And it's an evolution, but here's kind of the beginning. Is that a fair way of summarizing it, Jan?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Lisa. We, and it's what, February 8? If we find out something different on our state aid, that that will be information that we plug in here. And.
Very good. I see, Kim, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. If you scroll up, I think it was in the assumptions, when you talked about the PPE, that was a one-time initiative?
Yes.
And purchase?
Yes.
Is there going to be any cost to maintaining any kind of air purifiers? Any, like, is it a significant enough cost to consider?
Well, I I netted that out. Yes, there will be. We, the air filters, yes, our HVAC MIRV 13 filters. We will definitely, there's a year-over-year cost for those. I just took out the cost that I considered one time, that we were not, I didn't anticipate we would have to to buy more. Well, actually, we just bought 10 more air purifiers because a couple teachers, Brian Moore, needed one. And so we bought 10 more to have in our supply. I I think that's a pretty good number. All of the chemicals, all of the, you know, the special sprays we bought to help us with COVID disinfectant, we will have to buy those again.
Did you have another question, Ken?
I kind of do, but it might be premature, and I don't know. Looking at the line item for Summit Virtual, right? So we're looking at a savings of $100,000. And I was just wondering, like, is there any opportunity for greater savings when we consider our Brandon Learn From Home program? And I don't know that those conversations have been had yet. I'm just curious to see if there's a way we can offset it by bringing stuff in. I don't know.
And I don't know, Dr. Heidrick, would you like to?
Yeah. So those are, those are some of our upcoming conversations that we'll be having later this month and to try to reduce that and see how the programs work together, the Brandon Learn From Home and Summit. And we have been slowly, the number has actually been slowly reduced as more virtual kids enter into in-person or more virtual kids from Summit enter into Brandon Learn From Home. So the 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 numbers that we see are kind of a rolling reduction as we go throughout the school year and trying to predict that for next year as well. So upcoming discussions regarding that end of February, and we should know a little bit more in March.
Right. Yeah, we met with Brian Moore, who's our person in charge of this. And so we're all looking into this to try to balance between the opportunity for the students but with with the finances in mind as well.
Does anybody else have questions or comments they would like to make while we're on the discussion of the budget assumptions?
Jan, I think I'd like to see a higher student loss count. And 75, right now, is coming to my head, but I deferred to other board members if they think we should go higher. But my initial gut compared to the last couple of years, that 75 is maybe a little safer than 60?
Certainly can, I, yes, I can plug that that number in.
Yeah, we can, we can plug that number in, Diane.
Thank you. And I think this, again, that I know how to do this with the math, it's probably going to be closer to $300,000 fund balance impact if we did the 75 rather than...
I just plugged 75 in. The formula changed. So that one.
I'm not too far off.
Yeah, that cell was is a formula. So when we do 75, that brings our operating deficit to 284. But again, if we just take out like the state, the 9010 blend, if they stick with the blend this year, then then we're looking at a surplus. That 454 goes away. So there's just so many variables. See, I just deleted the that blend and and it goes to a surplus. So but we have to start with some sort of a model like we've done every year, and it's served us well.
And when are we, like, I mean, dates, right? We don't, do we know when we can expect to hear one way or the other on that blend?
It was, it was announced last spring, beginning of summer. I haven't heard any direction on announcement for that at this time. The only thing is the revenue consensus estimate that Jan has talked about, Jan talked about. But I hope that's up and coming. I hope we hear that by the end of April.
That would be wonderful. I think two things. I think the state's got to, you know, get their their numbers in to see where they're at. But also, I think they're waiting to see how much additional funding they may get from the federal government. So it would be wonderful to have that.
Does anybody have any other discussion points or questions for Jan?
No.
Okay, seeing none, and we're moving. Thank you so much, Jan. It's always extremely helpful to have this conversation early.
Okay, thank you.
And then moving on, we have Carly Stone with our education report.
Hey, hello.
Hello there.
Share my screen as well. And I have a bunch of items in my area. All right. Can you guys see my screen? Everybody good? Okay, so we're going back to just the routine of talking about what we've accomplished since we saw each other last, what we're currently working on, and then also what we're looking forward to. It is amazing to me that we finished the first half of the school year. So it's a big celebration for all of us. It has been a mighty, mighty first semester. And believe it or not, we're already in the second week of the second. During the transition to second semester here that began last Monday, we did receive some changes in requests for students to change their education plans. So these changes could have been a student that's currently in in person wanting to move to online learning, either to Brandon Learn From Home or Summit, or predominantly, it was students from either Summit or Learn From Home that wanted to return back in person. In regards to some of the questions presented earlier about Summit costs, we had 30 students that were enrolled in Summit first semester that have made the transition to either learn from home or in person. So when you multiply that out times the number of courses a student takes, that that's a, that's a really big number. So we've had additional changes along the way, but we're feeling as though we're getting a better handle and being thoughtful of ways we can accommodate some of those costs back in the district. And Dave Wyatt and his team have been a huge part of that. So report cards were meant to go home on Friday, and then we had snow. So report cards came home today for families. They are, they were given to students. Next school year, we're really excited. We're going to move fully digital, where all report card distribution will be available through the parent portal. But this year, we thought, given the COVID situation and ensuring that we're clearly communicating with families, we are providing a hard copy of the report card, but we're also providing the tools. Those of you that are parents probably saw in your newsletter that there's some directions there on how to access the grades at the parent portal. So our parents can start practicing that now this school year, so that when we launch in the fall to go fully electronic, they have had some practice hopefully. And of course, we'll have the directions for them as well. We launched, Dave Wyatt put together a Brandon Learn From Home Summit Parent Feedback Survey that went out toward the end of first semester to get some feedback from our families that are enrolled in both programs, Learn From Home or Summit, just for us to get a sense of what is the feeling of the program, what is the perception of parents. And we are very pleased at the number of responses that we received to the survey as well as the quality of responses that we received. They were overwhelmingly favorable to the to both programs, but some really great feedbacks specific to our teachers at Learn From Home, the structure, the thoughtfulness, and some great suggestions, too. So we've been thinking about that feedback and been utilizing it, I've been, as we've been working towards our second semester transition. So very happy about that. I'm very thankful to the team for putting that out to families and also the families participating. And then lastly, this year is unique as this, as you are familiar with many COVID-19 reports and updates that we as a district are obligated to complete. February 1 was an important date for us to have a mid-year progress report available. It is in our transparency button on the website. If anybody's interested, that is our COVID mid-year progress report. And then also, we had a report for training that was provided to teachers, parents, and students that was due in the middle of January. So that's also available on the transparency page on our district website. What are we working on now? Actually, today, we started proctoring the WIDA assessment, if you recall, as time we spoke, we talked about getting ready to prepare that assessment. And today, we started with some elementary students at Oakwood. So we have about 65 students that take this assessment here in the district. So we'll be taking care of that over the next four weeks. At this time, although the waiver has been submitted by Dr. Rice to not require districts to participate in state assessments, we are still moving forward under the assumption that state assessments will have to be given. There's a tremendous amount of preparation that goes into the state assessment process. So we are moving forward, business as usual in that planning. So that's a lot of work that's happening right now. The Leo program that Jan mentioned earlier provided funding not only for a coach, but also had some materials funds available this year. In fact, we learned about it in January. And so as a result, the literacy team at the elementary level was able to come together and use those funds to provide a boost of books for our classroom libraries, JK through 5. So very excited about that. We we put our order in for submission and review last week. And so we're hopeful that when March is reading month hits, we, our students will have access to some new books in their classrooms to get them excited about reading. Something else that's really important to us right now is some summer programming options, looking to see what enrichment programs we can provide to our families in Brandon. The survey is going to be going out to families just to gauge some interest on what options would be viable in terms of their summer plans and wishes and such. Kids are selecting courses for 2021, 2022 already, which is just amazing to me that process has begun. So lots of work going there. Our counselors are working very hard on that. And then lastly, we, previous to my transition here, a curriculum council had been formed in the district. Currently, at this time, we're reviewing the current processes of the curriculum council, how it works. We're getting ready to relaunch that here by the end of the month. So I just wanted to share that update with all of you so that you were aware that the curriculum council... So I just wanted to share that update with all of you so that you were aware that the curriculum council conversations are happening. And we're looking forward to having our first meeting here before the end of the month, and then one more before this school year finishes. Okay, and so what are we looking forward to? Oh, my gosh, it's preschool and kindergarten time. So why I made an error here. This is February tenth, please forgive my error. So Wednesday, February tenth, this Wednesday, two days from now, is our preschool kindergarten orientation. Very excited about that. That is a virtual event with Mrs. Dan, Mrs. Brower, and Mrs. Stewart. So looking forward to that. If you need some information, I know we're blasting it out on our Facebook page, and our principals have that information in their newsletters as well. Next week, Monday and Tuesday is our winter break. We're getting ready for March's reading month. Parent-teacher conferences will be here again for our second round, beginning the week of March eighth. And then, as Dr. Heidrick mentioned earlier, we are looking forward to engaging in some different conversations with various stakeholders about different school year considerations for next year. And I always just have to give a shout out to Mrs. Madaki at the middle school. She is an amazing photographer, and her students are just so photogenic. So she has beautiful pictures, and I was only able to grab one for this PowerPoint. But I just thought it was great to see some of our kids in school, enjoying the sunshine and some white stuff on the ground. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
No, I just love your report because it kind of keeps us a pulse check of what's going on, even though we can't, you know, be there. So thank you for making that fun and exciting to hear what's going on. So.
Thank you.
I'm very excited to hear about the kindergarten and preschool night coming up on Wednesday. Just you referencing it makes me smile with all those littles and their families coming in, you know, remotely or otherwise, just entering our school district. That is is just so exciting every year. I love that part. So I'm looking forward to hearing about that. Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you. Yeah, that's going to be class of twenty thirty-four. I know, right? Amazing. Good stuff.
That blows your mind, doesn't it? Thank you for everything. All right, now we're moving on to item nine in our agenda, which includes our action items. And first off, we have, may have a motion for the approval of the resolution to allow in-person contact sports.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the resolution to allow in-person contact sports as presented.
Second.
Thank you. And we still wanted to retain this item as an action item on our agenda. While we applaud the governor's decision announced last Wednesday, allowing winter contacts, contact sports to resume today, actually. As everybody's discussed, we're very excited. But we believe that while following the recommended safety guidelines, it's imperative for our student athletes to participate in their chosen activities. So we are proceeding tonight with presenting our resolution for board action to evidence our support, short of additional information, of course, and also short of further state orders of continuing athletic events with the recommended safety measures. So I just wanted to explain that we thought it was still relevant, pertinent, desirable to express our support for our, the continuation of athletic events in our high schools and for our athletes and in our school overall. So with that, does anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss or ask about what's going on with sports right now? All right, then with the second we have on the table, may I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Item B is the approval of School Bond Loan Fund authorizing resolution. May I please have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the School Bond Loan Fund authorization, authorizing resolution as presented.
Support.
All right, is there any discussion on this item? Jan, did you want to remind us as to what this represents?
You're on mute. Jan, you're on mute. Jan, you're on mute.
I'm sorry. It happens to the best of us.
No worries.
So sorry, this is our sixth one that we've done the last several years. And we're going to say by refinancing or refunding our School Bond Loan Fund, we will save approximately, the expectation is to save the taxpayers a million dollars. If we look at all of the refundings we've done the last several years, we're looking at about eleven point seven million dollar savings to the taxpayers. So we have definitely benefited from these lower interest rates, and we're taking advantage of that.
Thank you, Jan. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
May I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Cavalluna?
Yes. The motion passes. Thank you. We have our next item, which is item C. Yes, Jeff?
I'm going to recuse myself on item C for the, with dealing with the contract. If that's okay?
Yes, thank, thank you very much. We appreciate that. For anybody listening, Jeff is asserting his statutory obligation, I'll call it, to recuse himself from votes in which there, the vote, the action item presents a conflict of interest. And so I commend Jeff for being aware and sensitive of that and appreciate you jumping in. Thank you. So our next item, as we discussed, is the approval of the Brandon Education Association Contract. And may I have a motion, please?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the Brandon Education Association Contract as presented.
Support.
Just a quick statement, you know, this is a process for coming to agreement, and we commend the Brandon Education Association members, our administrative team, everybody involved for working diligently, collaboratively to reach an agreement. It takes time and effort and and everybody's patience and diligence. So we appreciate that very much. And thank you for everybody's efforts. Dr. Heidrick, did you wish to share anything?
Yeah, yeah, yes, I concur. I just want to thank the Board of Education, the Brandon Education Association for the efforts, the collaborative collaborative effort that took place. And I look forward to working with the association in the future on future contracts.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion to have on this action item? Okay, seeing none, may I please have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Cavalluna?
Yes. The motion passes. Next, may I have a motion regarding the approval of request for proposal for Harvey Swanson Septic Field?
Move to approve the issuing of a request for proposal for a new septic field at Harvey Swanson. This field will replace an existing field that has failed as presented.
May I have a second?
Support.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions at this time?
Yeah. Didn't we just fix one over there? Or is there like twenty over there? I forgot.
Three, I think, right? Are there three?
There are three of them, and one is, has been fixed, and one is, the oldest one is in good condition, working order. So this is number three.
Okay, thank you.
Plan to bring a contract back to the board at the, in the March fifteenth meeting, so.
Is this work we anticipate doing over the summer, then?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we think this might be a timing issue to ensure that the work is done in time for the following school year to seek bids early enough to schedule early enough in the summer.
Yeah.
Right. Very good.
If we do this in the summer and there's three septic fields, like, when are we looking at the next round of? I mean, is this a repair or is this like maintenance? What is this?
This would be.
A whole new septic field, right?
Yes. Yeah, it's supposed to be a replace.
Okay.
Mark Evans says that the other one is actually very old too, so we might be having this discussion in a couple of years.
Okay.
It's possible, yeah. Like the original or something. I mean, it's very old.
Two to go.
Yeah.
All right.
I think we put a Band-Aid on one of them within the last four or five years.
We replaced the one, it was about a hundred and fifty thousand or so, yeah. And then Fletcher, we've replaced, well, we replaced it before we sold the building, so we've done a lot with septic fields.
Yeah.
The nature of our area, for sure.
Yeah, the high school, we did that one too.
Any other questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. Thank you. The motion passes. Next on our agenda is the approval of the interim superintendent contract extension. May I please have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the interim superintendent contract extension for Dr. Carl Heidrick, subject to legal review and approval as presented.
Very good. We, we are fortunate, you know, our fall of twenty twenty semester has presented its challenges, including determining the best way to educate in the middle of a pandemic. We decided to offer numerous and varied options that also presented its challenges, although the best choice by far also had its challenges. State orders changing things up, transitioning to a new superintendent, and the list goes on, not to mention the day-to-day items that, you know, of operating a school district. Along with our incredible Blackhawk family, staff, community, students, of course, we have been fortunate to have Dr. Heidrick lead our district in navigating through these challenges over the past few months. And Dr. Heidrick's current contract, as our interim superintendent expires June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. So to determine the best next steps in identifying our district's leader, our board members have engaged in training specifically regarding the necessary and appropriate considerations for the superintendent hiring process, and of course, the best outcomes. Further, the board has sought information regarding the status of and the state of the superintendent search right now, which is kind of in a unique state, almost an unprecedented state, so I'm told at the present time for obvious reasons. So at this time, I feel our board understands and completely respects the importance of engaging the best person with the appropriate experience for our district, where we are right now, but also for our next steps. We have worked closely with Dr. Heidrick over the last three and a half months and have experienced, experienced his leadership, not only in working through the challenges, but the day-to-day matters, and enjoying his initial insights, at least, into our district's vision and action steps for how to achieve that vision. Continuity and good leadership is imperative at this time. I strongly believe that. And particularly if it makes sense with the person who is the right fit. I believe it is in the best interest of the district to extend Dr. Heidrick's contract, following the recommendation of the board's personnel committee, which thank you for your hard work in this regard. The contract terms are subject to further legal review. However, they do include, just as highlights, adjustments for days involving sick time, vacation, et cetera, because of course, with the extended time period, those needed to be, reflect that extension of time as well. In addition, the contract terms will include a bonus to reflect the structure of our, our school district having human resource responsibilities fall within our superintendent's role as well. We appreciate the opportunity and are honored to continue with Dr. Heidrick as our district superintendent through June of twenty twenty-two, under the contract, again, subject to further legal review. Dr. Heidrick, thank you for your efforts and for your consideration in extending your tenure with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you, and I appreciate this opportunity, and I appreciate the careful thought and efforts on this. Looking forward to serving the community faithfully each and every day, working with the parents and teachers and staff and administrators, and to continue to progress. So again, I'm looking forward to working for Brandon into next school year.
Thank you, Dr. Heidrick. Does anybody have any further comments they would like to share on this topic or questions, please?
I want to say, well said, Lisa. Thanks exactly, Dr. Heidrick. Thank you. Well said also. But for, for me, it's, the three and a half months is not even close, and there's so much more that we want to see. You get your feet and your hands dirty wet and start getting this district, because now as we're recovering even more. But looking at the, like I say, the state of the district, this was, we're now, I think, a win-win situation for all of us involved, but well said.
Anybody else have any questions or comments you'd like to share at this time?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. May I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Our next item pertains to the election of the Michigan Association of School Boards Region Eight candidate, and it requires a bit of discussion before the motion is presented. Does anybody have any thoughts to share candidates to identify for our consideration?
Yeah, I do. I mean, I rarely, sometimes when this comes around, I don't feel like I know anybody, but this time I happen to not, I know of three of the candidates for, and then I did hear the fourth candidate also speak. And I got to tell you, very well committed people, all four of them. But there was one person that sort of came to the front for me, that's Sandra Dukey, I think is how you would say it, D U H K I E. She works at Ferndale Schools, but I've actually seen her on a couple of the committees even step up and take some leadership roles and some teaching roles to other board members throughout the county, and I'm appreciative of that. So my recommendation out of the four is that we would nominate, or we would elect her, we would have, our vote would be for her.
I would support that. I liked her out of all the candidates as well.
Is anybody? I'm sorry, who was that who just spoke?
Hillary. I just thought I would support that also.
Thank you, Hillary. Much appreciated. So will someone please make a motion and identify this candidate for purposes of that motion?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve to elect Sandra Dukey, M A S V, Region Eight Board of Directors candidate.
Support.
Any further discussion anybody would like to have? Seeing none, may I please have a roll call?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the, may have a motion for the approval of voluntary severance plan resolution.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the voluntary severance plan resolution as presented. Support.
Any discussion on this item? All right, we'll move to a roll call vote, please.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski? Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. Thank you. Our next item, may I have a motion for the approval of the Extended COVID-19 Continuity of Learning Plan? This is something we need to do. We do at each of our our meetings on a continuous basis.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the Extended COVID-19 Continuity Plan as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. Thank you. The motion passes. And moving on to our our last action item, may I please have a motion regarding the approval to purchase iPads for our K through one students?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve to purchase iPads for K through one students, including cases in the amount of, including cases in the amount of $49,342 as presented.
Support.
Second, thanks. Any discussion, questions on this technology purchase?
I'd just like a little bit of elaboration, like are we purchasing and replacing iPads that have been non-reparable? Are we like, what is the cause of having to add? How many are we, you know, adding? That sort of thing, who, what, where, how, when kind of question? If anybody wants to answer that.
Jan, do you want to talk about the Essar funds and how we got to this point?
Yes. Last spring, we applied for technology funds through the Essar grant. So the this money was actually approved last May. We bought initially, we bought 400 Chromebooks. So this was the balance of the grant that we had to spend this year. And we we had planned from last year to spend it on these iPads. So we were completing, it's like Title I money. The money was restricted. So it was something really that Matt and and Dave had decided last year how they wanted to spend the money. So we're just completing what was started last year and getting them ordered. Thomas ordered them. Yeah.
I just want to make sure it wasn't something in addition to what we talked about like.
This was needed and they, you know, for the younger kids. And we are replacing some older ones.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. All right, the motion passes. Now we're on to citizens input. Maria, do you see any?
I am looking right now. I do see one that I will bring over, allow over to talk. Jennifer Manino.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you so, so much for including students on the school board meetings and for recognizing students and all of their achievements and everything that's going on, including the new kindergartners coming up. Because the students are the whole reason why our entire district exists. And I love everything that you're doing. I'm so happy to see the new school board members on here too. Congratulations. And congratulations to all the board members in their new positions. And I just want to say kudos to everybody and Dr. Heidrick for everything that you're doing and sticking with us here and helping us out. And I just am really happy tonight and pleased with everything. And thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
I do not see any more hands.
All right. Then our agenda tells us that item 11 is adjournment. So we are, I'm sorry, did someone have something?
I was gonna say, now we see Chris Dynas come back.
There we go. There we go. All right. So it is 7:44 and I am adjourning this meeting.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Thank you.
Hi.